Let's call the meeting order for the Sacramento County Planning Commission on April 26, 2021. Three thousand roll call.
Yes, and Commissioners Hong, Martenson.
Here.
Raythal.
Here.
Shelby.
Here.
I'm sorry, and Commissioner Teteche.
Here.
And you do have a quorum.
We start the opening statement.
And in compliance with directives at the county state and centers for disease control and prevention, this meeting is live streaming close to in-person public participation. Debris procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial nine one six eight seven five two five hundred and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Feel free to send your email comment to board clerk at SacCounty.net and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
Thank you. Can we call the first item of the agenda?
Okay, item number one is for a use permit, special development permit and design review located on the south side of Madison Avenue approximately three hundred and fifty feet east of Harrison Street in the North Highlands community. And the environmental document is that it's exempt.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Meredith Holesworth. I'm the project manager for the Madison Point apartment project. You can go to the next slide, please. The project site is located on the south side of Madison Avenue, one parcel removed from the street furniture approximately three hundred and fifty feet east of Harrison Street in the North Highlands community. The project site is zoned business professional and is surrounded to the northeast and west by business professional zoning and to the south by RD thirty zoning. And the site is currently undeveloped. Next slide. The request is for a use permit to allow a multifamily development on point three eight acres in the BP zone and a special development permit to allow deviations to the building setbacks, trash enclosure setback, and the parking lot planter width. The request also includes a designer view entitlement to comply with countywide design guidelines. Next slide. Here we have the proposed site plan. The project site is located in the BP zone, as I mentioned, which is a commercial zone. And upon intake, the applicant designed the project based on the commercial development standards at staff's direction. And while the application was active, the zoning code was clarified to state that this type of project should be utilizing the multifamily residential development standards instead of the commercial. And the site is to constrain to be redesigned according to those multifamily setbacks. So therefore, the building is proposed, does not meet the rear or the interior side yard setback. And these setback deviations are included in the special development permit request. Another requested deviation is the trash enclosure setback from the residential zoning to the south. And you can see the trash enclosure is in the southeastern corner of the project site, the bottom right of this exhibit. And the site plan also shows the private drive access coming from Madison Avenue on the western edge of the property, the proposed building envelope, and then the proposed parking as well. The building is facing away from Madison Avenue and toward the parking area, and there are sixteen proposed parking spaces, twelve of which would be covered. Next slide. The landscape plan shows all the proposed plantings as well as the proposed barriers along the property boundaries. The landscape planner deviation that's being requested under the special development permit is for the planters that are at the end of the parking aisles. Their requirement is eight feet in width. Two of them are meeting this requirement. And then, well, one of them is seven feet wide, and then one is six and a half feet wide. Next slide. This slide shows the proposed elevations, the top being the front of the buildings, which are facing south, the middle being the rear elevations that are facing in the direction of Madison Avenue, and then the bottom being the side elevations. Next slide. As shown on the plans, the proposed development includes the eight attached two-story apartments with associated parking and landscape improvements as well as bike parking spaces. The applicant proposes a guarding area and walking path for residents' use. The property boundaries adjacent to commercial zoning will be bordered by an existing six-foot tall wooden fence. And then the southern property boundary is adjacent to residential zoning and will be bordered by a proposed seven-foot split face wall. The subject parcel has previously been developed with a single-family resident but residents, but it is currently vacant. And this project has been determined to be exempt from SEQA. As of this meeting, staff has not received any comments from the public on this item. Next slide, please. The North Highlands CPAC met on August twenty-fifth of 2020 and recommended a unanimous recommendation of approval of the project. The DRAC met on August twenty-seventh of 2020 and recommends the project be found in substantial compliance with countywide design guidelines. And staff is also recommending approval of the project with conditions of approval. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendations are as follows: to recognize the exempt status of their request under SEQA to approve the use permit and special development permit subject to findings and conditions, and to find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And that concludes my staff presentation, but I'm available for questions, and we have the applicant as well. Thanks.
Do we have any questions for staff? I don't hear any. Can you read the applicant form?
Okay, Mr. Garbizab, this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office. We'd like to, I'd like to administer the oath to you prior to your making any statements. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. If you address, if you wish to address the commission, please stand to be sworn and raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do," okay? So do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this commission, is the truth? To help you, God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And before you make your statements, please state your name for the record and make the statement "I have been sworn." So you can state, okay, state your name for the record. I'm sorry, state your name for the record and then make the statement "I have been sworn," please.
Marcus Garbizab, "I have been sworn."
Thank you. And you can proceed with any statements you'd like to make.
Um, I have no statements at this time.
I have one question for you. Are you okay with all the conditions of approval?
Um, we did have three things we wanted to, uh, to ask to be changed in the conditions.
Okay. What are they?
Um, so the first one is, um, we wanted some language to be added to the conditions that would possibly allow us to, to remove one parking spot because, um, in the construction drawings, we're thinking that um, it might happen that we might have to remove one parking spot to fit a transformer, so we're wondering if we can add some sort of language in order to, uh, to allow that or something like that, if that's possible.
And then what were the other, uh, what were the other two?
And then the other two in comment thirty-nine from SASD, we wanted to change it from saying that it will be required to, it may be required. And then...
Just the roofing or this, oh my god, I think it's number thirty-nine, or is it something else?
Thirty-nine, um, from SASD here, it says that this, that's to obtain sewer service, construction of SASD sewer infr- infrastructure will be required. We wanted to change that to infrastructure may be required.
And what number was that you're looking at?
Thirty-nine.
It looks like it's item number, uh, condition number forty in our packet.
Number forty, okay, that's what I, that's what I got.
Got it. And then the other...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Do you want me to say the other one, the last item? Okay, and then the, the last one was on, for, in my packet, it's comment forty-one uh, from SASD. It's similar thing, it's changing it from will be required to may be required for the sewer easements. Probably comment forty-three for you guys or something like that.
And maybe staff can, the county staff can talk about those, those three real quick.
Sure, this is Meredith Holesworth again. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Well, I was just going to mention, I'll, I'll let Meredith cover the parking, um, condition, but as far as the two SASD conditions are uh, concerned, we do not have SASD, um, staff at this meeting. Uh, we do expect to kind of review final conditions for projects, uh, during our uh, project review committee meeting, which was held, um, a couple months ago, I believe, on this project. Um, but without SASD in attendance at, at this meeting, um, you know, we could perhaps make, um, a change to the condition to maybe say, you know, s- something along the lines, subject to uh, SASD satisfaction or something along those lines, but if we're looking to change the language and if the applicant is indicating they'd like that to be considered, I would suggest that the item be continued until such time that we, uh, get SASD's, um, consideration of the requested changes. But Meredith, perhaps you can speak to the parking request, uh, condition?
Sure, yeah, thanks for that. I was gonna say the same thing. Um, and yeah, for the, for the parking, um, as the, as the site plan is proposed right now, um, you're meeting parking, and there aren't any requests to deviation, um, to deviate from the required parking. So that wouldn't be something we could just put into a condition. Um, that would be if you wanted the option to reduce the parking, we'd need to include that in the special development permit, um, which would definitely mean that this would need to be continued to a future planning commission date.
Hey, Chris, if I'm correct, the, uh, the SASD, um, requirements, are they pretty standard?
Um, I, I believe that is a standard can, uh, condition. Um, Meredith, did that come up at all during the uh, project review committee condition review?
I don't believe it did, but I, I also do think these are pretty standard conditions.
Any, any questions for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Martenson. I just suggest unless the applicant wants to rescind those requests, that these are pretty significant issues that we continue the item if, if he, um, wishes to pursue these, these changes.
I, I tend to agree. Um, do we have the applicant on?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we could, I could rescind the, um, the parking, but the other ones, you, can we add the, the other thing that you mentioned, subject to SASD? Um, that other comment, we could do that instead of the, the may be required. That works.
I tend to think that this, this is Commissioner Martenson again, that this is a standard condition. And so without having staff on the line to, to speak to it, um, I would prefer, if you want to pursue that change, that we continue the item.
Okay, that's fine, then. We'll just, um, leave it as is, then.
Okay.
Okay. We, we, we hold on to public comment at this time. Do we have any public comment items for this, this item?
No, there's no public comments for this item.
Are we close up a comment? Um, entertain the motion.
This is Cara, I'll move staff.
Commissioner Martenson, you want to go?
Sure, I'll move staff recommendation.
And this is Commissioner Raythal, second.
Okay, and for the roll call vote, Commissioners Hong, Martenson.
Yes.
Raythal.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
And Teteche.
Yes.
And the motion passes with Commissioner Hong absent. And for item number three is...
Right number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Item number two is... Yes, it's for a time extension located at sixty-eight oh three Southwood Avenue, approximately two thousand feet north of Florin Road, fifty-nine fifty Hedge Avenue, approximately thirteen hundred feet north of Florin Road, and zero Tokay Lane, approximately twenty-four hundred feet north of Florin Road between Southwood Avenue and Hedge Avenue in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is a prior mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting progress.
We don't usually have a presentation on these, do we? Time extension.
Um, we, we actually do have a presentation. Sorry, this is Chris Bohley, Emma Patton, uh, associate planner, should be on the line, and she'll give a very quick presentation for this one. Actually, um, she's still working on her, yeah, I think she's still working on her, her audio. Seems like there might be a might be a problem.
Well, I think we need a, probably abbreviated version for this, Chris, be my, my thoughts, unless, uh, someone else on the commission do otherwise.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I think given that she's having audio problems, perhaps, um, if, if the, any commission is inclined to uh, not have a presentation for this time extension, um, I think we can handle it that way and just maybe go straight into questions.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Any, any questions for, for staff?
Nope, I'm good.
Nope.
Uh, should we add the applicant here?
Hello, Bruce Walters, Walters Land Planning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, uh, well, uh, applicant for this, uh, project, we are in agreement with, uh, conditions of approval and here to answer any questions you may have.
Any, any questions for applicant?
Nope.
Here none? Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments on the item.
All right, we'll close the public comment section, entertain the motion. I'll, I'll move to the approved staff recommendation.
One second.
This is Cara.
Okay, and Commissioners Hong, Martenson.
Yes.
Raythal.
Yes.
Teteche.
Yes.
And Chair Shelby.
Yes.
And the motion passes. And for item number three, we have a, there's a use permit, special development permit and design review located at fifteen thirty Howe Avenue, approximately six hundred feet south of Arden Way in the Arden Arcade community, and the environmental doc is exempt.
Okay, Commissioners, this is Chris Bohley again. Um, this one is also Emma Patton's, um, um, project. She's indicating that, um, that her, her phone might need to be unmuted by the clerk of the board's office, if that's possible.
Let's give it a try.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
There we go.
Perfect, thank you all.
Thank you so much. All right, sorry about the audio problems, everyone. I was on my computer and decided to use my phone audio as it wasn't working, so hopefully this works throughout the presentation. Um, so once again, my name is Emma Patton, and I'll be presenting the, uh, Howe Avenue redevelopment project for you this evening. Next slide. So the project site is located at one five three zero Howe Avenue, approximately six hundred feet south of Arden Way in the Arden Arcade community. Um, the site is presently developed with a extended stay residence in by the Marriott Motel. Um, to offer some greater context, there's existing commercial development located to the north, south, and east of the site. Um, of particular note, it's adjacent to the Howabout Arden Shopping Center located just northwest of the site. There's also high-density residential development located east of the site. Next slide, please. The project request includes a, a use permit to allow multifamily housing to exceed one hundred and fifty units um, in the LC zone and a density of thirty-eight acres on a four-point-six acre lot. The request also includes a special development permit to deviate from a number of multifamily development standards, and I'll go into a little further detail on each of those proposed deviations throughout my presentation. And then lastly, the project is requesting a designer view to comply with the countywide design guidelines um, and allow for a parking reduction. Next slide, please. So this is the site plan. Uh, the project proposes to convert the extended stay motel to a one hundred sixty-six, or one hundred seventy-six unit apartment complex. Uh, proposed improvements to the site include cosmetic improvements to the units, um, converting the hotel reception area into a clubhouse and leasing office with a mailroom, a laundry facility, a bike room, uh, amongst some other amenities, refinishing the pool deck and patio, refreshing the outdoor gathering spaces and amenities, providing carports for covered parking and additional motorcycle, electric vehicle charging space stations and bicycle parking on site, and updating and refreshing the landscape. So as, as I noted, there's several deviations, uh, from the multifamily development standards. Um, one, one of those includes a, a parking reduction. Uh, two hundred and two parking spaces are required per the zoning code. Um, but through designer view, up to a twenty-five percent parking reduction may be granted. But the applicant is provided a hundred sixty-seven vehicle parking spaces and is requesting a seventeen percent parking reduction through designer view. During the designer view advisory committee's review of the project, they did comment, uh, that given the project's location in close proximity to transit and other commercial uses, uh, they were supportive of the parking reduction being proposed. The applicant is requesting other deviations related to reducing the number of carports. Uh, one carport is required for each unit, however, uh, due to a number of limiting factors, uh, including, uh, existing easements, uh, those, there, there are only twenty carports being provided. Um, additionally, one bicycle parking space is required per, per unit, however, only eighty-five are being proposed. Um, of those eighty-five, twenty are, uh, enhanced, uh, bicycle parking facilities located inside the clubhouse. Um, while we are looking at the site plan, I will point out one last deviation related to site planning. Um, the existing trash location, look, trash enclosure is located at the southwest corner of the site uh, within the required setback. So while this enclosure will be updated as a part of the proposed development, it is proposed to remain in its current location, um, within that required setback. Uh, the deviations for the carports, bicycle parking, and trash enclosure location are included in the special development permit request, and the parking reduction will be included in the designer view request. Next slide, please. I apologize that this seems to be facing the wrong direction, um, here, but there, there are one hundred and thirty-two studio units and forty-four one-bedroom uh, units proposed for that total of one hundred six, seventy-six units. Uh, this slide features the, the floor plans for, for each of those units. Uh, our multifamily development standards require a minimum of eighty cubic feet of storage. Um, and, and while the one-bedroom units will provide this storage beyond the bedroom closets, the studio units do not. Um, also, our multifamily development standards require forty square feet of private outdoor space per unit. And while the one hundred and thirty-two studio apartment units, uh, provide thirty-three square feet of outdoor space, no outdoor space will be provided with the one-bedroom units. So these two deviations, uh, for the storage and the outdoor space are also included in the special development permit request. Next slide, please. Again, I, I do apologize for the orientation of the slides. Um, here, here you can see the elevation for the proposed apartments. Um, there's a few color options uh, which were provided by the app, applicant to create blocks in the apartment complex for a better wayfinding and interest. Next slide, please. Thank you. And the slide features a perspective of how the improvements may look once the site is developed. Next slide, please. The Arden Arcade CPAC reviewed this project at their February twenty-twenty meeting. Uh, they unanimously, unanimously recommended approval of the project, uh, though they did share some concerns related to the limited parking available on the site. The DRAC also met in February twenty-twenty and recommended the project be found in compliance with the design guidelines, also noting their support for the parking reduction. Next slide, please. Thank you. So based on, uh, staff's analysis, uh, provided in the report and the recommendations by the CPAC and the DRAC, staff is recommending approval of the project. Uh, specifically, staff is recommending that the commission recognize the exempt status of the project under SEQA and approve the special development permit and use permit subject to the findings and conditions, and find the project to be in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines and approve the parking reduction. Um, so that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and the applicant is also online.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Zach, Commissioner Raythal. I, I just have a question as far as the use permit goes, um, with the parking, and, and maybe the applicant has um, already solved this with, um, off-site parking, uh, but if the, if there was an impact on neighboring commercial, um, developments, uh, due to the underparked, uh, project, uh, is there an opportunity for the use permit to be, uh, revoked or, um, adjusted in the future?
So this is Emma Patton, again, yeah, this, this is Emma Patton. I'll, I'll maybe answer that question first, and then I'll pass it on to Chris Stewart, our applicant, who can maybe go into further detail um, about their plans for the, the site itself. Um, the planning staff in, in, in working with the applicant did add a couple of conditions related to uh, a need for a parking management plan. Uh, this is condition number seven and eight in your package. Um, so condition seven requires that prior to occupancy of the, uh, of the site, that a parking management plan be provided to our office to consider and approve. Um, and there's a number of items, uh, consistent with that, uh, condition that would need to be included in that parking management plan. And then condition eight states that if that plan is deemed inadequate in addressing the parking demands, um, you know, should there be any sort of concerns that demonstrate that, uh, that plan is not working, they would need to, uh, bring a modified plan to our office for consideration um, and review and approval.
Perfect, thanks for that clarification.
And, and, and just to piggyback on that question, so if, if there was an impact to a, um, a commercial um, uh, space, they'd have to make an agreement with that commercial space for it to be adequate uses of, of parking to get approval, right?
If, if they were to request to use a, say, an, an adjacent property, uh, they would need to go into, enter into an agreement with that adjacent property. Is, is that what, is that, does that answer your question?
Yes, 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 that was my understanding, yes, correct. Okay. Uh, any other questions for staff? We have the applicant for.
Okay, uh, Chris Stewart, this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office, and before you make your statement, I'd like to get you sworn in. And I'll unmute your mic. Can you hear me well? And this is for Mr. and Ms. Stewart?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Ms. Stewart, this is... Okay, hi, Ms. Stewart, this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office, so if you wish to address the commission, uh, please stand to be sworn. And I asked that you please raise your right hand and the appropriate response is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And uh, before you make your statements, uh, please state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Thank you, this is Chris Stewart, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, uh, this is Chris Stewart on behalf of PEG Companies, the applicant developer for the project. Um, and thank you, Emma, for your presentation. Um, as Emma mentioned, the, the proposed project is a conversion of an existing residence hotel into a hundred and seventy six multifamily units. The residence inn is um, moving from this location and constructing a new hotel at a different location off Highway one sixty. So this presented an opportunity for the reuse of the site for housing. And we think it's a, a good use of the site at infill location. At a place proxim- to how, uh, services and goods across the street at Howabout Arden Shopping Center and on the transportation network of Howe Avenue. Um, we're in agreement with the conditions, including condition seven and eight regarding the parking management plan. And we're prepared to put together a, a plan that demonstrates that the project um, can manage the parking on site. Through uh, restrictions and leases and arrangements with individual tenants. And if the need becomes necessary, we'll pursue offsite arrangements for employees or residents, depending on demand. Uh, we're available to answer any questions you have, also on the line this evening are Soren Holliday from PEG and Mick Bladen from PEG. Thank you.
All right, thank. Uh, do we have any questions for uh, the applicant? I don't hear any, do you have any um, public comment on this item?
And no, sir, there are no public comments.
Okay, we can close the public comment section, we can entertain the motion.
Well, move Tatiishi, I'll move uh, staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Commissioner Rachel, a second.
Okay, this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office, I have Commissioner Tatiishi uh, making the motion and uh, Chair Shelby with a second. And I'll go ahead and take the roll call vote, Commissioner Ham, Martinson? Rachel?
Yes.
Commissioner Tatiishi?
Yes.
And Chair Shelby?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
And for item number four, the planning director's report.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chris Puhuli has a couple of quick items for you, um, the first is to uh, mention, again, I think I mentioned it last time. That we are taking a couple of items to the uh, to the board uh, this week on Wednesday. Uh, that were previously heard by the uh, planning commission. Uh, one of those is the Brookside uh, Equestrian Center, uh, which uh, will be again heard by the board as well as the Escaton Parking Lot uh, expansion. I'll report back on those two items at, at your next hearing. Uh, we were scheduled to um, have the Alberta specific plan workshop on Wednesday, uh, that item will be continued. Um, and so we will be looking to reschedule that uh, with the board so that we can get direction and uh, begin moving. Uh, uh, in an effort to see if, if development can occur in the Alberta specific plan area with some revisions to the specific plan. Um, the other item that I, I wanted to note for you is that, um, as you're aware, we've been working for um, the past year, year and a half. On uh, changes to our zoning code related to um, uh, multifamily uh, development standards. Uh, as well as some um, use categories for multifamily, um, we are going to be doing a round. CPAC workshops uh, beginning in um, in early May. Uh, we're going to visit all fourteen CPACs, uh, talk to them about the proposed changes before bringing. Those changes to the planning commission um, later this year. So wanted to let you all know that we're beginning that work. And that's all that I have for the update.
Okay, and. I'm sorry. Alrighty, item number five is miscellaneous scheduling matters.
Uh, I don't, I do not have anything to report here.
Okay, and there are no public comments. At this time.
Okay, well then, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, have a good night.